Hit record.
Oh, no notification came up on my end. Okay.
Says recording.
It says recording.
Okay, excellent. So that's our roll call. Public comment?
Nine.
Wear your mask.
Eric's public comment. Okay, so no public comment. Additions or changes to the agenda?
Yep.
And then what do you have?
I want to add one request based on my discussion with our superintendent for a request for the school.
What's that? Oh, you're gonna put that on?
Added to the agenda.
So that'll be C. All right.
Six C.
Yep.
What is that?
AES request.
Alrighty. Minutes of. Minutes.
Let's do.
I moved to approve the minutes of the meeting from August 20th, 2020.
Eric had something to say before you jumped in on that.
Tough shit. I did too.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So Eric, what's up?
So I would add D preliminary CIP recommendations for public works.
Ah.
And Curtis, what do you have to add, sir?
I guess it would be E would be the Veterans Park.
Okay.
At Monument Lane.
All right. Anything else?
I won't have any from the firehouse till probably next month.
Okay, okay. So our meeting just got longer. So, all right, so that's our, any, any further additions or modifications? All right. So approve prior meeting.
I moved to approve the minutes from the meeting on August 20th, 2020.
Second.
Who got there first?
Ed.
Doesn't matter. Ed.
I'd give that one to Uncle Ed.
Uncle Ed, okay.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or complaints or anything? What do, no? Okay.
Five zero zero.
So that takes us to our new business. So Shannon.
Yep, take it away.
To Veterans Memorial Field?
Yeah, so hopefully you all got my email in which I described this, so I don't have to go into detail about it. But based on discussions with a number of people in town, I think it would be wonderful to have a playground at the Veterans Memorial Field on the berm on the western side on Riverside Drive. I did not know about this having been raised when I was in charge of making sure that field got completed a couple of years ago. But Carl's son, S U N, his wife died of cancer. His son is in the fourth grade now at Andover Elementary School. And he offered a significant amount of money that he didn't know whether that would cover, and I don't know whether it would, to put a playground there, but I would love for us to go forward with that. Pamela John is probably Adrian trying to come in.
Could be.
So unless it's somebody visiting our meeting, okay.
That'd be exciting.
No, I'm not saying goodbye. Oh, that was, that was our cat, never mind. Um, so Eric, do you know, were you able to look into, would it have to be ADP, you know, compliant? I would imagine if we're doing new construction, it would have to be.
You mean ADA?
ADA, that was it, yeah.
I would.
Security system, anyway.
I would assume, but the good news is it's completely level there from the parking area back there. So I don't think ADA compliance would be a particularly big deal or deal breaker there.
No, I just was wondering, like, I've never constructed a playground, and I was wondering, for example, if we have to have parts of the quote unquote apparatus that would accommodate disabled individuals. That's what I was wondering.
I would have to say that I have no idea.
I'm glad you said that, because I, I didn't either, and we'll have to take a look at that. Do you have any idea what the cost of a playground? I guess obviously it would depend upon the apparatuses we decide to put in there, but what, what we might be looking at?
I, I think it depends totally on what you want. I mean, playgrounds, you know, that covers quite a range of, of things.
Yep.
You know, the, the thing that's came to my mind is would you fence around it? Or would you not, would you leave it a grass surface? Or would you use like the rubber chip, or would you want it mulched, or what? You know, it seems like you need to kind of understand what it is you want there. And I would also want to think about the location of it in relation to anything else you're likely to put. I mean, my suggestion would be you come back essentially with a sketch that shows where a playground would go, where a future concession would go. You know, and we don't have to do everything at once. It can be staged over a number of years, but you want to plan for all that now.
Yeah. So where I was thinking, just when I was looking at the berm when this came of issue, was if I'm standing on the field and the Hop River is to my left and Riverside Drive is to my right and the berm is in front of me, then the playground would go over to the left of where all the electricity is now for the watering system on the field. Because we would need to use the electricity and potential water access for bathrooms, depending on what we do with that, where the decrepit snack shack now is, which is on the right-hand side, right? So I was thinking playground over on the left-hand side closer to the river. Bathrooms and/or pavilion with storage, blah, da, blah, da, blah, over on the right-hand side, where the access to the electricity and water now is. Right?
Well, we need a lot more to know about.
I know, well, that segues into my next point, which is we've needed bathrooms there for a long time. And Eric had counseled that he didn't know if we could really afford, or the town, better yet, if the town would support having a more expansive building rather than just compostable toilets. But my idea for that area was we absolutely need storage for soccer and for softball, because the soccer shed is down in the parking lot that floods all the time. And the soccer shed floods. And that storage container that's now used by softball is an eyesore. It looks hideous up there. Now, I understand it's being moved across to the softball field by Ryan Fitch, but it'd be nice just to have storage and have a facility that had storage there right on the berm, right? So I know when we had originally looked at facilities that would have a bathroom and storage, and we also thought about incorporating a concession area, because baseball 20 years ago used to do a major league concession business out of the decrepit snack shack. So when we had looked at that years ago when we were doing the field, that was about $100,000. So just to put that out there, like what we want to recommend, if CIP wants to recommend anything. Eric, you had said that compostable toilets are 30 to 35,000?
Yeah, something in that range. If you want a good, so the company that does the most of them is called Clivus Molstrand. The reason why. I think it's C L I V U S M something. So no, I can't really spell it. I could get you that info, info though.
Great, okay.
So that's what's used at all the national parks. And like all the Connecticut State Parks used them, other than right now, apparently they're not using them because of COVID, because they don't want to have to clean them, so they're paying for porta potties. Though they've got much nicer composting toilets right next to the porta potties.
Does somebody have a radio on, because it's really coming across and interfering? Okay, thanks, sorry Eric.
So I guess what I'm saying is that that can be a very effective way to go. You know, I looked at one of those for putting one in at the Andover Museum, too, because it gets us away from having to put a full-blown septic system in. There's some maintenance involved, but it's not a lot. You know, they're pretty reliable, pretty brahm-proof today. There's tens of thousands of them out there.
Yep.
You can make them look like anything you want, but you know, it's not as nice aesthetically as a regular, you know, regular bathroom with, you know, all the regular bathroom type stuff. And I would think the, the question that would, the thing that would make it harder is if you decided you wanted like running water in there and sinks and stuff like that. Because at that point, that means you have to have a gray water discharge area anyway. So it can be a much smaller leaching field, but you're still talking about a leaching field. So, so that may make it less, you know, less economically feasible if you got to commit to a small leaching field for the gray water anyway. It also depends on what you do with the concession stand, because a concession stand may very well require a tested potable water source.
Ah, okay. Well, I, the concession stand is, is the third priority, if, if it's not even a priority. The priority for me was, was toilets. And then secondly would be storage, because our soccer shed floods all the time where it's now located. And the storage container is hideous, the gray thing sitting up on the berm, so.
Why don't you just do the trailer park thing and put it up on a couple of blocks?
And we could have people tie dogs to it, make a little dog park in there. So anyway, we, we need a lot more detail before CIP can spend much more time.
I'm aware of that, so I'm just putting these ideas out here. So the third idea, which I think is totally awesome, is in the park, what used to be the parking area, is the area that I refer to as the area that floods where the soccer shed now is, I think would be an awesome area to put in basketball courts that we then could line for pickleball for especially the seniors who live right across the street on Riverside. And it would be okay, hopefully, even though it's in the floodplain. And I also know that if we go to the extent of pursuing anything there, we're going to be dealing with the plight of the turtles that we dealt with when we talked about this before, when we were doing the field. That I understand Julia Victoria's husband raises as an issue because the turtles habitat is in the area around Hop River. Is that right?
So yes, so there would have to be some due consideration. What I would suggest doing is if you're interested in pursuing that, that you reach out to Hank Gruner. And you discuss it with Hank, because Hank may be able to tell you how to do it, give you a lot of guidance. And let me give you his email right now while I'm thinking about it. Or his phone number is eight six zero seven one two one three zero eight.
Who is he?
He is probably one of the leading herpetologists in the state of Connecticut. And he happens to be a town resident and a turtle guy. But he's a really nice guy. I use him, we pay him as a consultant anytime we're doing stuff in the Hop River watershed, because he's, you know, a really good authority and he's pretty level-headed. You know, he understands that there's trade-offs and everything. And so, so I'm sure, you know, usually what ends up happening is you end up putting some restrictions on the time you can build it, or what you have to do to mitigate the effects of it. In other words, he's a fairly reasonable guy.
Okay.
Yep. So he'd be a good resource if, if you're looking to do that. And we do know that quite a number of turtles go across the road there and burrow and put their eggs in that field by the Hop River homes, believe it or not.
Oh, wow, okay.
Looking there carefully, you'll, you'll see in the summer some little dig spots in the really sandy grass there.
Wow, okay.
That is turtles burying there. And when we were chip sealing the road, the contractors had to rescue two of the turtles, which fortunately they managed to do it before they put the, the chip seal goo down, or else they would have coated those poor turtles. But they had to escort several of them out of the road so they could finish the paving and the chips. Yep.
So those were just my ideas. I think that we could really use those improvements to improve our offerings to the town. Priority-wise, and I'll, I'll, I'll elaborate on these ideas for our next meeting, but priority-wise would be the playground, because we've got somebody in town who is interested in helping to provide funding. And I think we probably could get some grant money on top of that to do funding for that, depending on how much it costs. And then second priority, because we're not going to be using the fields as much during the winter, would be to start looking into the compostable, compostable toilets, compostable, whatever. And then to look and see if there's a way to incorporate all of that within a structure that we were looking at that might include the storage and how much that would cost, so that we can look at the cost differential and the construction. We did, I know, look at where leach fields would go, and there was enough area, we believed, on the berm itself that wouldn't then interfere with the playground area and a pavilion-type structure. And then I will reach out to Hank to talk about the turtles.
Okay.
Hey Shannon?
Yes, Louise?
Yeah, I'm wondering, do you know who may, will be maintaining that playground and all that?
That would be our public works, I would imagine.
Would be in addition to what they're doing now?
Yep.
Okay.
So I would imagine that anything that, I mean, we don't have a Parks and Rec department, right? So anything that would come under town supervision would be done by our public works.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't, Louise, and so certainly that needs to be a consideration as we look at the funding for that. I don't think, just based on what I know about, the little I know about playgrounds, depending on what we choose, for example, as Eric was mentioning, for the flooring of that, if it's mulch and/or the rubberized component, I don't foresee a heck of a lot of maintenance, but, you know, then again, the other thought, Louise, is because this gentleman wanted to do it to memorialize his wife, maybe he would undertake it as his project for the town to maintain the playground that might bear his wife's name, for example, you know? That's a possibility also.
I mean, if you, if you did a good job and you built it with quality durable materials, you know, I don't see a lot of, you know, I don't see a ton of maintenance involved in it. I think it's something you could do, you know, without burdening public works.
I, well, I don't think even if we had maintenance, it would burden public works, because I, you know, just from the, the custodial services at the school, I don't think they spend a heck of a lot of time on our playground equipment, you know?
Right, that's my point.
Good.
Oh, my bigger concern is maintaining a toilet facility that requires, even the, even the composting toilets do require. And so that's, that's a long-term concern about that.
Yeah, somebody has to clean them.
Yeah.
Right.
I nominate you, I nominate you Fred. But.
What's the thought, Shannon, at this point? Is it, is it to try to do a playground that, that has equipment then? You're saying that the kids aren't really playing on the, the equipment that they have at the school now?
No, 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 so totally different, Adrian. So here's the deal. The thing that prompted me to consider this was, I had two people in town say, Shannon, I would like to be able to take my grandchildren to a playground, and can I do that at Andover Elementary School? And I looked into it and the answer is yes, but not while school is in session. So especially during the pandemic with some grandparents caring for their grandchildren, they don't necessarily want to be limited to only being able to go to a playground, especially in the winter months, when it's dark by the time school is out, to be limited to that, that facility. So when then I then learned about Mr. Sun's offer a few years ago to do the playground on the berm to memorialize his wife, it just all kind of fit together to say, hey, that would be, I think, a really good thing for our town of Andover to have, especially given that if we locate it there, you know, you've got all the people who use the soccer fields with their siblings and parents and whatnot, being able to use the playground while the other siblings are practicing and playing. It just seemed like a, a really good idea.
Is the, is the goal to have this to be accessible to the kids with disabilities or?
Yes, sir. We talked about that before you got on. I think any new construction of a playground right now would probably mandate that.
It, it doesn't, but it doesn't, but there is a, there is a group out of Hartford called Boundless Playgrounds. My wife, it was actually on the board for them. And they help communities both design and, and raise funds for, for community access playgrounds.
So your wife is going to take charge of the project?
Yeah, no. I could, I, I could barely get home for dinner, so.
I was trying, Adrian, I was trying, okay.
Adrian.
So it's called, it's called Balanced Playgrounds?
It's called Boundless Playground.
Boundless, okay.
Yep. And I can, um, I can, I can see if I can reach out and get a contact for us.
That'd be great.
All right.
Um, so Shannon, do you know if the offer from this guy is still valid?
Yes, it is still valid, but I don't know how much it is.
Okay.
And what I wanted to do there was first come up with an idea of how much we're talking about as far as what we want, what we want to propose to see for the playground, to then figure out the potential cost before I recontacted Mr. Sun to find out what he was interested as far as the funding that he was willing to provide. And therefore, how much more we would need to budget, raise, go to a, a grant, or all that kind of stuff. So that's where I, that's where I started.
Yeah. Well, I, I'll reach out, because Boundless does this all over. If you actually Google Boundless Playgrounds, they actually come up on, on a Google search of all the playgrounds they've done in the area.
Great.
They, they started here in Connecticut, but now they're nationwide, so.
They, did they help out with the one at the Jewish Community Center in Bloomfield?
I believe they did. They also did a really big one over in South Windsor.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so they can kind of, they can help us a little bit.
Great, great.
Okay. Anything else about that?
Nope, I'll follow up with that for our December meeting. I, well, yeah, okay.
Okay.
I'm just was trying to think if we could have a December meeting, but I think we can based on the schedule before Christmas and the holidays, so.
All right. So B, Community Center update, is that for Eric to clue us in?
I just wanted an update. I know Ed, Uncle Ed is on the committee and just wanted to hear what's going on with that. Uncle Ed?
Yeah, I'm here.
Community Center update?
Yeah, the last meeting was canceled by Jeff Marie, and Eric probably has the latest information on that. Eric, I know you and Adrian were working together as to the drawings in the back of the building. Our last meeting was at the gazebo and we looked at the availability of space there, having to only move the septic tank. And with Adrian's good idea about in the future being able to connect it to our existing community room. And so all those good ideas were put forth, and Adrian, I guess you haven't had a chance to put, share the committee or as far as the PDF, your drawings you volunteered to do.
No, I did. They were on a Google Drive for three weeks and they were available to everyone. It was sent out to all the committee members. You guys, all you had to do was download them if you wanted them for yourself. And I believe Amanda downloaded them for the town.
Okay, I must have missed that email, sorry about that.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I, I mean, I still have them, obviously, and.
You have my email address, could you please email them to me?
So I can't email them, but I could try to open the, I can put them back up on the cloud drive. They're, they're too big to email, because it's, it's an actual walkthrough of the building. It's not just drawings, it's, there's some PDF pictures, but there's also an actual walkthrough. And when, um, when Jeff does the meeting, I told him I would get on there. I'll share a screen through Zoom and I can walk you guys through the building.
But even if you said you sent it, hold on, if you said you sent it to Amanda, did she put it on the town website?
I don't know if she did or not. To, to be honest, I, I have not, I've been tied up in other things, so I haven't been able to follow up on that.
Yeah, and I didn't, and not only did I miss that email where you said you put it up there, I, no, no, but no, but no committee members had any discussion through emails about it, so I.
Well, part of the problem here is I'm not looped into, so Jeff's, like, I didn't even know there was a meeting. Jeff never put me on the community, like, the list, the loop, so I found out that there was a meeting after the fact. I did reach out, like I said, I reached out to, to Jeff, and I said, you know, how come you hadn't sent it out? He goes, well, I already had a meeting and you didn't get me the drawing, so I canceled the meeting. I said, well, I sent it to you, so anyways, I resent them by sending him a link to the drive. And like, we left it up there for about three weeks. And I, I actually just pulled it last week, so.
Well, that's too bad, because I guess, I, I don't think a lot of committee members got a chance to see that through miscommunication, but that's okay.
I mean, so Jeff never actually gave me a list of everybody that was on the committee, unfortunately, so I don't have everyone's emails. If you want to get that to me, that would be helpful, and I'll gladly resend it if you feel like it didn't get distributed.
Yeah, I can find the group, the group of people on that and send it to you. Let me just, I, I, we haven't emailed in a long time. What's your email again?
I'm, I'm on the, I'm on the town email.
Oh, yeah.
Town email that, that got sent out. It's, uh,
Right.
Amandevo or something like that.
So, so then I'll send you a, a group, the group of people that's on Jeff's committee, and then you could re, 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 we all need to, before our next meeting, we've had two, we've had actually two canceled meetings now, so before our next meeting.
I understand.
We should all have the opportunity to review those again, because obviously that's the next step, is to review those drawings.
Yep, yeah, and, and like I said, I, we, I tried to get them out to you guys ahead of time, so you'd have time to look at them before the meeting. But I will also, during the next meeting, when he schedules one, do a screen share and do a walkthrough.
Right, okay. So, all right. So I'll get you, I'll get you all the people's emails so that you can blast them out, blast out the connection. You said you're going to repost it.
I can, I just, I have to reload everything up to the Google Drive, and then I will send you a link to the drive again.
I am, I am now texting with Amanda, because she just sent me stuff about the toy drive, and I'm asking her whether she put it on the town website, which would circumvent the need to do all of this, so bear with me.
That would be nice if she did that.
I know she was having a hard time downloading them, I think, because there was a, there was an issue with the, the town security, like the way it allowed her to access or not access, so.
But, but to sum up then, anyways, we had a lot of good ideas at the last meeting, and Adrian kindly volunteered to do a lot of volunteer work on those drawings, and I can't wait to see them there.
Not just the drawings, I mean, Adrian agreed to build it for us.
Wow, awesome! At spec, at spec. Yeah, way to go, Adrian, all right, man.
Your head there, there, buddy.
Also share with Shannon and the others then, your, the ideas of, of the grant money, so that we can't connect the two buildings now, but in the, after it's built, wait, let a year or two go by, and then we'd be able to connect it in a closed walkway to kind of make a complex there, right?
Yeah, you could. I mean, the thing is, you can't, you can't formally plan for it as part of the process, because if you go, the thing is, if you go, if you do it as a renovation, then the, the threshold, when it becomes Davis Bacon and mandates you to, to do the whole state thing, is much lower. If you, if you do it as new construction, it's a million dollars. So as long as you stay below a million. And, and the advantage of that, too, would be it would allow local contractors, including, you know, Andover contractors and over residents that are, that have, you know, businesses, which, believe it or not, there's a ton of guys in town that are electricians, plumbers, contractors in general.
I know many of them.
Right, and, and, you know, and listen, to be candid, this is not, this is not my forte, it's not something I would go after. But certainly some other folks in town might be interested, and, you know, it's a nice commute for them and it'd be a great project. And that the, currently the way the building is designed out, you, you know, if the committee goes for it, would be a, a wood frame type construction, so it could definitely be handled by, by local contractors. It doesn't have to be something crazy. You know, we can do prefab trusses and, and the building will go up a little quicker. Um, you know, we can do prefab trusses and, and the building will go up a little quicker that way as well. So, um, and the, the plan at this point would be to do a building. Building space upstairs and, and an unfinished basement that we could adapt to the community as we needed going forward. So basically, you do two levels. You'd have a, a, you know, a walk-in level from the back. And you'd have a, a, you know, a grade level from the front or side.
That's right, and to share with the committee, the, the nice part about that with the walk, the basement part of it is uh, accessible from grade, so the grade is such that we looked at that. That it opens up ni- very nicely to a big backyard, so you'd have a lot of app, opportunity for outdoor activities on the big grassy field that's there.
Well, and then you wind up, you actually end up with two completely separate spaces, so. You know, you have a whole nother, a whole nother space that would be accessible for, for whatever type of access you'd like down the road.
Indoor shooting range, you know.
I'm game.
Hunting.
Okay, that sounds really good.
So there's, Adrian tried sending me the files, but they were too big. Last I heard, he was going to try to send them to me differently. So once she.
My web posted them, but that's fine. I'll, I'll, I can do it again. I thought she was having a hard time pulling it off the website, but.
He just said that whatever you sent her was too big, so however you need to get her to her, they are not, conclusion, they are not on the town website.
Not a problem. We'll figure it out.
Well, yeah.
Ask, ask her if I give them to her on a flash drive, if she can post them that way.
I'm now your secretary. I'll happily do that, Adrian. Okay, here we go.
You're hurting, do you mind? I'm asking.
Oh, no, I don't mind. I don't mind.
Well, we, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves either. I would say that most of the members on the committee haven't had even a chance to review it yet, so we want to get the committee to meet on them first before we go. Totally public and ask for public input.
Shannon's, Shannon's shaking her head.
No, I would like to see them. No, I've just seen, whatever.
Well, you could see them, but you're on a, you're on this committee and you're asking about.
Touch base with you tomorrow, so what am I telling her, Adrian?
Um, the, the question was just, if I get them on a flash drive, can she, can she upload them then?
Great, I'll ask her.
Is there, is there an upload limit on the town website? That was the question.
Well, Eric can answer that.
No, he can't. He's not that guy.
Amanda's that guy.
Amanda's that guy, okay.
That person.
Amanda, Amanda is the, is the, the shizzle when it comes to the town website.
Oh, excellent. I'm glad to know she's the shizzle, okay. Excellent Yiddish word. Um, and the town hall is closed tomorrow, so how would you get it to her if you were going to do that?
Um, I would open my window and uh, throw it in my window.
I actually will not have time to do it this evening, but I will get it to her on Monday.
Okay, sounds good, so. Um, onto our next thing. Request from Shannon, uh, item sixteen.
Yes, okay, hold on, I'll, I'll stop texting.
You're the hot ticket for the.
Uh, baby, I came up with so many CIP ideas, I'm going to bankrupt the town. It's going to be awesome. Okay. So here is the newest thing from our superintendent. Um. Based on pandemic, based on HVAC requirements, whatnot. Um, we would love to be able to get air conditioning throughout the entire school. Which will cost. Watch it, Mandeville, I'm going to not be your secretary anymore.
Which would cost?
Laughing, Fred. Damn you. Which will cost fifty thousand dollars.
No way.
What cost it?
No.
Oh, yes.
No.
Yes.
You have to school for that.
Per room, per room.
You know, maybe you could give everybody one ice cube each for fifty grand.
Are we talking about those little handheld fans that they carry around?
Then you'd have to budget for batteries.
Stop it now, man.
Now rechargeable.
I am going based upon the request of my superintendent.
I love that estimate. That's an awesome estimate.
So for.
Hold on, that is from our business manager to our superintendent to me. And quote unquote from our superintendent, everything else that she would ask for is a want. And right now, we can only deal with needs, and this actually is a need. That we probably will not be able to provide for in our budget. So that's why I'm putting it forth to CIP as the Board of Ed liaison to the CIP. And no more laughing, okay.
Can't do that building for fifty thousand.
There's no way.
It's not the building, it's what's not already air conditioned in the building.
It, it currently, the, is only one wing that's done, right?
Yeah.
So the new wing in the central office has AC in the, the lunchroom as AC now.
And the library and the computer room, so all we are talking about is the first floor. And I think.
The three, four.
The three, four wing.
Okay.
Well, the, there, but there.
Yes, go with the superintendent's request and let's deal with that, and then I will go back to her and say. Everybody on CIP, especially Adrian, thought you were crazy. And I'll diss you specifically, Adrian Mandeville, so there we go.
Well, we need specific information. We need some, something from a contractor.
Okay, I will get that. I just wanted to alert CIP that I'm doing my liaison duties and not just all about. Pie in the sky projects for the town. I will come back with that for December also, haha.
So I, I would suggest.
December's like next month, right?
I realize this, Adrian. Do you know who you're talking to?
Apparently a dynamo.
You know who you're talking to.
You're on fire tonight.
Oh, yeah. Guess you wait, buddy.
So.
When I'm talking to you from the White House, yeah, okay.
So if we are going to put in.
People in power.
Yeah.
See.
Yeah.
Given the situation with COVID, probably the single most important thing we need to do. Is start accommodating fresh air intake.
Yep.
Um, in all the rooms, which is something every school should have anyway.
Okay.
Um. You know, that's, to me, that's almost a more important. If you came to me and said, Eric, what I really want to do based on COVID. Is I want to come up with some kind of HRV or ERV system. You know, for fresh air exchange in the classrooms. To me, that would, would probably be more pandemic related, would be more than just AC.
Okay.
Um, most, most likely. Um. There's a, so the, the, the problem is, the, the way the school is built, there are certain fire breaks. That they can't cross, so. Um, that was, and that's why I'm, I'm questioning the, the, the cost issue, only because. One of the things that came up when we were talking about. Um, or when, when the discussion had come up about using that wing for other purposes.
Yeah.
You know, the whole thing came up, oh, you know, can we do?
Right.
Yeah, can we do AC or something? And.
Well, we had talked, we had also talked about putting in the, like, the.
Mini splits, mini splits.
What, no, we had talked about putting in air conditioning per room, like the, you know, what are those things called?
That's called a mini split.
Okay, that's what it's called, fine.
Yeah, so, yeah, so mini splits are, are basically, they're, they're self-contained units. Um, and that, in theory, would work, but in a COVID situation, would not be great, because it's going to.
We're not, no, that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah, so.
So I will do two things. I will look into the air conditioning. Proposal and fresh air intake into all of the rooms for pandemic issues.
Yeah, if Laura, if Laura has an estimate, if you can just grab the estimate, that'd be great.
Laura, Laura's estimate was fifty thousand, so, you know, I'll, I'll see what I can do. Now, as far as the fresh air intake, though, I mean, respectfully, Eric. Every room has a room to the outdoors. I mean, is that, like, open in the room? Is that, or what are we talking about to accommodate that?
So every modern building, every building today has, and every commercial building has a requirement for. A certain amount of fresh or makeup air going into the room. Um, you know, older buildings like ours do not. And um, one of the things that's been very apparent in indoor space. Is if you have high ventilation rates, there seems to be a lot less transmission of the virus. Um.
Yeah.
So, like, they, they were doing some comparisons about a couple of gymnasiums. There was an NIH study. Two gymnasiums that both had uh, COVID people, they found later COVID positive. And one had really high ventilation rates and the other one is an old building that didn't. And it was a difference between like forty people getting it and nobody getting it.
Yeah, and it, it's the same, it's the same thing for airplanes, you know, how they have that forced ventilation on airplanes for pressurization. It's the same principle, so. But, um.
No, what, what, hold on, what I was asking, so that I know what I'm asking about. Is, are we talking the need to install ventilation systems in each room for the air intake?
No, so it's, 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 it's an. It's a, it's a certain number of air exchanges per hour that's generally required anyways, but. It may be, depending upon what this quote is for the air conditioning. It may be part of it, because they, they may do a push-pull system where they. They're pushing in cold air and they're doing a drawback for recycle, so. Um, it just, I don't know what, how it's quoted, so.
Well, I just want to note for the CIP record, that we have gone ten weeks without any COVID cases in our school. And our superintendent, to give her additional kudos, was incredibly forward-looking. Sent out a survey to all the parents, seventy percent of whom said, we do want to do this, so we are going remote. And this was before any of the stuff happened with a hundred and forty-five out of a hundred and sixty-nine towns being red alert. Uh, because we wanted to not have to close between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So just to give a positive report from the Board of Ed, our superintendent is fantastic and was so forward-looking that she looked ahead and said. Let's take care of this and we are dealing with it so that we will be going remote for only seven school days. Uh, between November twenty-eighth or thirtieth and December ninth. Um, and that will have resulted in us basically being quarantined for fourteen total days or remote for fourteen days. Um, which I thought was a great idea and supported her in doing that, even though we had a lot of pushback from some families, but.
Yeah.
Uh, just kudos, we've gone ten weeks without any COVID cases, we get, based on all of the preparation. That everybody has done and all of the work everybody has done. Administration, staff, parents, teachers, students, it's just been wonderful, so I, I really am proud of that.
Great to hear.
Okay, so, uh. Eric, preliminary public works request.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Uh, presumably I can figure out which of the freaking forty open documents I have.
What, the what kind of documents?
Freaking.
Freaking open.
Uh, are you looking at a screen that says two thousand and twenty-one CIP recommendations?
We are.
Say hallelujah, okay.
Hallelujah.
So if you remember back to last year's plan, we had originally talked about putting roughly a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year into the slush fund. Not slush fund, the capital fund for public works equipment. Based on a fifteen-year equipment modernization plan, basically. Uh, we didn't put that, we put half that in last year. Um, and we didn't buy the big thing that we had been forecasted by, which was a. A mower with a sidearm, um, flail mower, basically. Uh, just because that was more than we really had or wanted to spend, given our limited funding. So the town initially put fifty-five thousand dollars into the capital equipment fund. And the Board of Finance was able later to supplant it with twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, you know, at the end of the budget cycle by transferring in some unexpended funds. That fund already contained about twenty-five thousand dollars, which brought the total up to about a hundred thousand in the fund. We bought two things. We bought a material handling boom for the loader. And we bought a material spreader for the plow truck, which was supposed to be delivered last week, but was not. Um, those things have a la- long lag time, because they're basically custom-built. So the bottom line is, we should currently have about eighty-two thousand dollars in the capital fund. Um, so, the, the big thing that we need to start thinking about doing is replacing our sweeper. Our existing sweeper is thirty-eight years old. Um, it's well past its life expectancy and it's very time-intensive to maintain. The downside of sweepers is they're stupidly expensive. They're somewhere between two hundred and ten and two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to buy for a standard sweeper. Um. We looked at the rationale or the, the case for. Just contracting out in the spring, sweeping the roads. But one of the things we've run into is that because we're starting to do a lot of chip sealing. Um, as part of our road maintenance program. Um, chip sealing requires a lot of sweeping, because basically you sweep it just before you chip seal. And then you chip seal and then you wait about two weeks and you sweep it again and you wait a couple of weeks and you sweep it again. Um, and you may choose to sweep it a third time, because you keep knocking stones off for a considerable period of time. So, the, the bottom line is, we're going to need a sweeper not once in the spring. But we're going to need it a bunch of times throughout the summer season. Which makes it impractical to hire a service, because we'd have to hire one too often. So I think on the table would be buying a sweeper, whether new or used, or kicking in with another municipality. Uh, to co-buy a new sweeper. Um. The downside of co-buying is that everybody wants a sweeper in the spring at about the same time. But the good news is that nowadays, because most towns, Andover included, aren't really putting sand on the roads. There isn't anywhere near as much sweeping in the early spring as there always used to be. We used to sweep. Like crazy for about six weeks. Um, so we, I will bring it up again with Hebron, Hebron and Andover had talked about co-purchasing. A sweeper, um, because that's obviously one way to reduce the expense of purchasing a sweeper. Um, the other thing to do is that a lot of bigger municipalities. Who sweep regularly for, for trash in the roadway. Tend to have sweepers that are, uh, you know, only eight to ten years old, but have enough time on them. That they want to get rid of them, but they still got life left on the sweeper. So that's the other thing I think we really need to look at. Is what are the, you know, can we buy a, a good condition, used sweeper, you know, for eighty thousand or so? Um, you know, as an alternative. Um, so that if we're going to make a big purchase, that's probably the biggest purchase. Well, by far the biggest purchase. The second thing we need to contemplate is. Uh, our third plow truck, which is fifteen years old as of this year. Has some pretty significant body rot. Um, in fact, we've had to take the, the uh, cover off of, off of it. Because there's nothing to the swing arm for the cover. Uh, where it attaches is basically rotted off. Um, we're probably going to, in the short term, uh, send it out and get that welded. Um, Eddie.
That's not something Tim can, uh, Tommy can do in-house.
Tommy thinks that's past what he's really comfortable welding.
Okay.
Um. So, yeah, I think we would end up sending that out. In the past, we have pretty typically replaced those dump bodies about year twelve. Um, what we've done the past number of years is we've started sandblasting the bodies. Uh, to try to extend that. Um, but, so this thing is fifteen years old now. And if you remember our normal capital plan, the intention was always to have three primary. Uh, plow trucks that are fifteen years old or older or less old. Um, but since we're coming off of a period where all the plow trucks were old. It's going to be another six years or so before we have, or seven years. Really before we have all the plow trucks within that, uh, that age, so. This plow truck at least, we're going to have to plan on extending and running it past its kind of recommended. So I think there's a. You know, I thi- I think we have to look at in the next year or so, potentially re-bodying that. And that's a big, that's a big shot. That's, there, the bodies are about forty grand. Um, we would reuse. Um, we would reuse the chain, we would reuse the little hinge gate on the bottom. We'd reuse all the hydraulics, um, but just the bodies themselves are fairly expensive. Um, so that would be something that we would consider. Yes.
Yeah, let me, let me just ask on that oh-five truck, is it, well, how's the drivetrain on it, the motor and the transmission, is it decent shape to keep it going?
Yeah, it, it does seem to be in reasonably good shape. Um, that. Truck earlier in its life had some, it's an international, it hasn't been super mechanically reliable. But for the last four or five years it's run, we haven't really had any problems with it.
The transmission okay, is it a standard?
Well, the transmission had a major repair.
Rebuilt recently, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's an automatic?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so we, we invested in a new transmission and how's the, the motor, is the cylinder, are all cylinders firing okay?
Yeah, as far as I know, the motor's in pretty good shape, mechanically, the thing is in pretty decent shape.
Okay, so it's worth repairing the, the bed then?
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, I think in the short term, what we're looking at doing is just welding it. Um, you know, before the salt starts spilling out the side of it. But longer term, we're, we're gonna have to consider a new, uh, you know, a new body for that. Um, as you know, we switched on the last plow truck we bought to a Hardox. Uh, bed, which is a different steel that has a lot better weathering characteristics and is a lot tougher. Um, simply because over the life expectancy of the truck. It's cheaper to spend more on the body initially, if you can really make it last long enough that you don't have to replace it. And pretty much every one of the Everest bodies we've got, we've ended up replacing before we got to the life end of the truck.
Eric, could you, could you move the, down your cursor on the document hunting so we can look at your, thank you.
Okay, that better?
That, now I can see what's coming next, thank you.
Okay, and the last thing that I think would be reasonable to consider. Is purchasing an asphalt hot box. Um, which is just what it sounds like, it's a box you put asphalt in. That can heat it up and keep the asphalt hot. Because one of the problems we've had with pothole patching and doing repair work is that. You know, the asphalt needs to be hot. To come, to be well-compacted. If you're putting it down and it's too cool, you don't end up with a good compaction, you don't end up with a good quality patch. Or material or driveway apron or whatever. Um, and because for potholes, you know, you're doing a little bit here and then you're moving and doing a little bit more, you're using small quantities of asphalt. And you don't have a good way to keep it hot, so what the crew had been doing is they'd been buying about five tons. You know, and using one to two tons and pretty much pitching the rest because. You know, it was too cool by the time they got it, but they needed that big hot mass, you know, so that it cooled slower. So we've been borrowing a hot box from Bolton. Um, but in a lot of ways, it would be a pretty convenient thing to have sitting in. The shop because it means any given time when you have free time, you can send the guys out potholing and doing shoulder repairs.
What's the cost estimated on a hot box, that's one of the things you didn't include, my dear.
Right, so I've been looking at that, it depends on the size, it depends, there's a lot of variability in hot boxes. Um, they can be propane-fired, they can be diesel-fired, they can, uh, have a. They can have a hydraulic so they dip backwards. Um, and they can come with accessories. The two things I see that are worth having extra on a hot box are a separate tank to put in tack coat. Um, because one of the things is if you're doing a, a repair, a tack coat is like a glue between the layers. Um, and you get much better bonding, you know, if it's cleaned and tack-coated before you put the next layer down. So you can get some of these with like a twenty or thirty gallon tack coat. Drum on it with a hose, so that, that's probably a worthwhile thing, and the other thing I've seen is a bunch of them. Have a little hoist on them. And the reason is to get a big enough plate compactor that will do you some good. They're pretty freaking heavy, so lifting the thing up and off each time is kind of a pain. So a lot of the crews will have just a little hoist, whether it's hydraulic or manual. Just to lift the thing up, put it on the platform and drive to the next hole. So the, the bottom line is you're looking at somewhere around forty thousand for a new one. But I've been poking around and Adrian was poking around, looking at some of the used units. And I think you can get a ten or twelve-year-old one, you know, for basically half the cost. And mechanically, there's one hydraulic cylinder on them. And there's a diesel or a propane heater. So there's not a lot of stuff to break. So I think that's one where we could get away with buying a used piece of equipment and get reasonable use and life's. Lifespan out of that. And I would think for somewhere around twenty grand, you could potentially come up with a, uh. You know, an asphalt hot box, um, that's a dump style. And then, you know, retrofit it with the tack coat tank, um, and a little hoist, so that I think. Um, I've been looking at a couple of different options for, you know, kind of bulk pothole patching. Um, that's one of them, the other one is something called a spray patcher. Um, which theoretically should be a better fit for us, but, um, you know, they're kind of finicky. And the people I've talked to that use it basically say, if you have one really good operator that likes the thing, it's gonna work really well. And if you don't, um, they're gonna hate it and they're gonna, you know, throw it out in a couple of years. So I'm, I'm still trying to arrange for us to try one, to see what our luck with it is. But the, the hot box is the alternative. And the, the good thing about the hot box is for doing bigger pieces, that's a better fit than a spray patch anyway. Um, so that's kind of where I am with that. Uh, just so we know where we are in terms of our list. Uh, this is the, the current capital plan. Um, the only thing that's really different from the capital plan from two years ago and last year. Is if you looked at twenty-twenty, we were originally planning on purchasing a. A mower with a sidearm flail, but that got kind of canceled because we just didn't have the funds last year to do it. Um, and so we did buy two things, we bought the material spreader. Um, and we bought a blower for our small Steiner traffic tractor, which has proved pretty handy. Um, we've actually used that quite a bit. Um, so my suggestion for twenty-twenty-one, the next year would be, the priorities would be a dump body. The asphalt hot box and then some combination of sweeper. Um, and if we, we went all new with that, that's about three hundred and twenty. Um, of which we have about eighty socked away, but I think we can reduce that number. By going for used equipment, certainly for the hot box, potentially for the sweeper. So I think we would end up with a number, you know, quite a bit smaller than that. You know, and, and kind of go from there.
Um, Eric, is there anything out of that list, the hot box or whatever, that we need? For spring into, you know, into June, July or the sweeper, like what's our status with that, I know we have some money in. Funds currently, so if it's something that CIP needs to address and move over to the Board of Selectmen Finance, whatever. Is there anything that needs to be addressed prior to the season next year?
Yeah, so probably we don't have enough money to go for a sweeper. Set aside unless, unless we found a used one. You know, that was relatively inexpensive and is still in good shape. Um, potentially an asphalt hot box would be fairly. Uh, doable with the money we have sitting there right now. Theoretically, we could do the body for the Everest. You know, the Everest body for the truck with the money that's sitting there now. Although that would need to go to public meeting, we could buy the hot box and be under the threshold at which it would need to go to public meeting. Board of Finance could approve that, but the Everest dump body would definitely be a, a, uh, public meeting.
It sounded as though what was the priority, Eric, was the sweeper. Given what you'd see as our needs for next spring with regard to, uh, the chip sealing and whatnot, my dear.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of why I was asking.
Well, I, I mean, I think my own feeling is that right now we can weld. Um, we can weld, repair the body and easily go another year. The reason I'm bringing that up is because if you, if you think about it, we're gonna hold that thing. Um, we weren't really planning on buying another plow truck till, you know, the twenty-twenty-three season. Um, so if we do that, then that body will have gone another three years. And then that truck is going to be our emergency spare. You know, potentially for up to another five years before we buy another truck. So by the time we get to there, you know, we've run that truck, you know, somewhere around twenty-three years. Which is clearly past what we're ever gonna sneak out of that body. So somewhere in the life of that truck, we're gonna end up re-bodding in some form or another.
Yeah, what I was saying, I think what Adrian and I are both trying to get to is, what action do you want CIP to take? To potentially make a vote or a recommendation that then would need to be acted upon by Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen. For stuff coming down the pipe that we're gonna need for next spring.
Right, so, I mean, for this coming spring. I mean, I, I think the only thing potentially we would buy would be the hot box.
Also, the other, the other question, Eric, is, and we ran into this when we bought our previous truck. Given the lead time, like what's the turnaround time to get a body put on, like if we put this in a budget, you don't get the money until July. Can you get that done before winter, because obviously you don't want to lose the truck in the winter?
Yeah, I mean, what we would do, we could do that. Um, the bodies are easier to get than a whole truck built. Um, it's, you're talking like a three-month lead time on a body, something like that. But remember, if we approve a budget in May. You know, we immediately order, as soon as we have a budget approved, I mean, we would order it. We would be able to pick it up plenty of time to get it.
Okay, I just didn't want us to run into an issue with the truck. You know, I, I know that the pothole maybe isn't a spring thing, it's, it probably. You know, it could be, I guess, depending upon our schedule and, and what our guys are doing, but.
Yeah, but it sounded like you really wanted us to get the sweeper, Eric, so are you backing away from that, my dear?
No, no, I mean. I think in terms of large projects, the sweeper is the thing. You know, we need the most, it's, it's basically the oldest big piece of equipment and it's something we've been limping along for a long time. And it's like parts are falling off of it, you know, which is kind of embarrassing. When Andy comes back and the back flap is missing, you know, and he's driving out with the pickup truck trying to find the pieces off the sweeper. You know, I mean, it's, it's led a good life, we bought it new. We ran that thing hard for thirty-eight years, you know, now it's time to take it out back and shoot it.
It, it might behoove you though, Eric, to, um. To move this along as the sweeper, come up with a number for a used one. And it's, a lot of this type of equipment will turn over cheaper in the winter because nobody's using it. You know? Um, and then in the spring, it's gonna get more expensive because then everybody's gotta pick up sand from the winter, so. If you move this along, it may be a better situation where you have the money available and you could just find the right piece. You know? Just a thought.
I, I have, I have two questions regarding the hot box, technical question.
Sure.
Number one, if you can find a usual without the little boom on it, don't, don't, doesn't one of our trucks have a lift gate on the back of it so we can? Move a, move a heavy plate compactor around with the lift gate, can we?
Yeah, but you're gonna be towing it, so you'd be, you'd have to disconnect the truck or run two trucks out whenever you're working, so.
Separate truck, yeah, two trucks, two, two, two-man crew, anyways, we're gonna have two-man crews, two trucks.
Yeah, but, yeah, it, it's, it's more practical to have it right there on the trailer setup and it's lower to the ground, it's just a better. And they're not, we're only talking like a thousand dollar, like winch boom, like a.
That's fine, that's fine. Second, more important question, we've done a lot of good chip sealing, my concern, and I brought this up before, we're gonna see this winter and this spring, a lot of. Locations that, uh, we did a nice chip seal, now the road's totally sealed like it should be, but. In many cases, we have a ninety percent good road, but we have wheel rutting, particularly in the white side, right side wheel. Path where the road is dipped down, we've lost the profile for drainage, now what we're gonna see, many locations. We're gonna have ponds of water that won't drain through the cracks in the pavement, they're just gonna be sitting there. And the plows can't take them out because it's a dip in the road. We might want to consider upgrading the hot box concept to what we call a, also a skid box where. We can, in these very infrequent locations, we could skid a hot mix across to get. To re-establish the cross-sectional geometry before we chip seal. Get, get a hot box for a little more money that's capable of skidding a level, leveling course. What about that idea, Eric?
You know, the, the, the problem is, is that you're talking, by the time you do that, you're talking a lot more. If you want to really fill, um, you know, and.
The wheel ruts, yeah.
Wheel ruts, you're, you're talking about a lot more material than you're really gonna put in a standard. You know, smaller scale hot box. You know, you're really talking about getting some kind of drag box and using it behind the existing truck.
Yeah, which many, which many towns have, but so far you've talked about subbing that out, right?
Yeah, I mean, so far we've, so one of, one of the reasons why. To me, I'm not so concerned about that. Is just because when I really look at the cost. Um, for us to hire a paving crew, um, when, when I'm shimming roads. By far the majority cost is the cost of asphalt, you know, so. I, I think in some ways you're better off subbing that whole thing out.
I, I can barely hear you because somebody is not muted and there's a lot of background noise from a TV or a radio. Could everybody who's not talking mute so we don't hear that? Please, thank you.
Okay, so I, I guess, you know, and, and we had, Adrian and I had talked a little bit about, you know, the possibility of. Of buying an actual small paving box. But, you know, again, the limiting cost really is the cost of asphalt, far more than the cost of labor. Um, so I'm not sure it really gains us anything. And, and in many ways, I'd rather have a full-blown paving crew that knows what the hell they're doing. You know, rather than our guys up just, you know, dragging, you know, and filling ruts.
Right, well, they, they, you definitely could do it that way, however, just there's a lot of infrequent locations and spot locations where. If you're gonna sub it out, you almost have to spend a lot of time going out and painting it and telling them where to go. Whereas, you know, our, our PW guys could, could find these and, and take care of them as they, as they pop up, so there's advantages. To either way, and, and certainly, Eric, you can solve the problem either way.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that, I, your, your point is taken, Ed, except that our guys would locate them anyways. And our guys generally have to go out with the crew just to do, um, traffic control as part of the contracts, so.
Yeah, yeah, but my point is, we do need to address those because again, I think we're gonna see. Quite a bit of problem this year and all the roads we chip sail, sealed. That we didn't do shim, and I, I know, Eric, we talked about it, you and I, and you said you didn't have the, you were, you were short on funding, and I think, I think that's gonna. Turn around and bite us in the butt a little bit on that.
Well, I, I think, I think what Eric and I also talked about though, like we said, we, we're looking at the idea of. Picking up a smaller box, a, a lot of guys don't like the little boxes. They want the biggest box they can get because they can do the big parking lots quicker. So the little boxes come up fairly frequently, fairly inexpensively, so. I'm just not looking at those and tracking the pricing and, and we may come back to, to CIP with an ask for that.
Right, and let's, let's watch this spring, I think there's gonna be very little specific locations around town where we're gonna have puddling that's. Now is not draining, because before it used to drain through the cracks and undermine and accelerate. Each year, but now it's not gonna drain and we're gonna have puddles, so let's, let's keep an eye on that for the spring.
That may be the justification at that point to, to, to pull the trigger on a small box.
There you go, okay, thanks, let's, we can move on. There you go, okay, thanks, let's, we can move on.
Yep, yep.
Eric, can you please, Eric?
Yes.
Are you either gonna post these documents or can you forward them to the committee?
Absolutely not, these are top secret. If I send them to you, I'd have to hunt you down and, you know. I wouldn't want to do that.
You know where I live, as do IU, so we could deal with that.
Right, uh, yeah, I can certainly send it out to the committee. To be, to be honest, I think, finished this at about, oh, I don't know. Seven, so, um, that's.
I'm seeing the typos, I appreciate that, okay.
Right, it's got a little polishing up to do before it's ready for prime time. But one of the things I've been tracking, um, is. You know, keeping a list of what equipment we have, what. You know, should be on our list, what the effective lifespans of the equipment are and what age our equipment is. You know, our goal is to basically have, uh, if you look at the last column, which is age over lifespan. Our average piece of equipment, you know, should be basically a half. You know, on average, we should be halfway through the lifespan if we're doing a good replacement cycle. So what I've done is basically listed out the age over lifespan for all the pieces of equipment we've got. Um, you can see that because we bought a new plow truck, uh, at the five-year mark after plow truck number two. You know, we're in much better shape with plow trucks than we were just a few years ago. But number three is already at 15 years. You know, and we're gonna end up running this thing to more like 18 years as a primary truck. So, but after that rotation and we've bought that piece of equipment. Then we'll have everything, you know, in terms of plow trucks within that 15-year time, time span. So, so that's good, um. You know, so that's pretty much everything, I, I took the, if you remember, I produced this list last year, I took a couple pieces off that list. Because we junked them, I mean, we still technically have a roller. But it's so old, um, it hasn't run in about six years, it doesn't vibrate. Um, so there's not really any reason to hold it and, and we're gonna get rid of that. Uh, pretty soon because it just, to us, doesn't really have any value. So that's kind of it from me unless you have questions.
I, I have, I have a couple of comments if I could.
Certainly.
That's regards to the, uh, uh, we're talking about the, the, the new body for the international truck. That's an old, that's an old five, you said?
Correct.
Yeah, um. I, I pay attention to what other towns around us, and I'm not saying, you know, do as they do or anything else, but. Um, the town of Lebanon, the town of Hebron, the town of Coventry, uh, uh, Bolton. They're buying the, either aluminum or the stainless steel bodies on their new plow trucks. Um, if you look at the, the state, the, you know, with the, which we could buy off the state bid list. Um, they went from the internationals, which. Really do not last, I, I was in international for probably 30 some odd years, different. Um, different models and makes and years and, uh, they're, they're a lousy truck. As far as the cabin chassis go, so I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at your list here to put a, a new hard ox body and I. I try, I try to pay attention when, uh, we were looking at the, the Peterbilt, the newer Peterbilt that we have now with a. Hard ox body, that's, that's a steel body.
It is a steel body.
Right, I know what it, it's supposed to be, uh, the best of the best for steel bodies and things like that, but. Steel still rots a lot quicker than aluminum or stainless steel. The town, I'll take the town of Vernon, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm close with the, uh, uh, what are the, the head of the public works over there? And they order their, they order their international and now they're buying freightliner trucks. Um, but they, they specifically request aluminum fuel tanks, aluminum air tanks. And the, uh, either aluminum or stainless steel body on their freightliner cabs and chassis. And, uh, I just think that the, our existing international truck. Um. I, I think it would be a waste of money. To put a new body on that truck. Because I, I would suspect that the cabin chassis are gonna just. Probably puke after you put that new body on a short time after. Um, I would recommend that you. Weld the heck out of it to get as many more years as you can and then replace the whole truck. Um, because that, they, they just don't last, they do not last.
Um, the, so that, that truck is only gonna be a primary plow truck. Until, you know, we're, we're scheduled, so what I'm trying to do is get us on essentially a five-year. Purchase cycle, so we buy one of the three every five years.
I understand.
Um, you know, the next one's scheduled to be about 2023, so we keep them spaced at five years. Um. To do that, we're gonna be sitting at 18 years at that point. And then it goes into the rotation as the emergency spare. And what we basically said is we'll keep it as an emergency spare. You know, essentially until we blow it up or something expensive happens, you know, and then we junk them. Um, because it's not worth. Committing to an expensive repair. But it's awfully nice having a spare plow truck if you break something to be able to put somebody in.
So is it, is it worth spending the money on a, on a, on a new Everest body? On that old truck? That's best, but that's my, uh, that's my, my question or comment.
Right, I mean, the, the question is if you're really gonna go. And try to push the thing, because remember now we're still talking about pushing the thing. Another eight to nine years in our inventory. And can you weld it and keep the existing body functional for another eight to nine years?
Well, I mean, I, I, I think that the answer to that is we talk to the, the person that welds it and see what they say.
Yeah.
Um, and, and with regards to going to steel or, you know, stainless steel or aluminum. We actually had a rep come in and talk to us about it. And one of the things that they pointed out is that, you know, a lot of. A lot of places do like the aluminum and they like the stainless, but. Um, they're not quite as durable. Um, in the sense of. You know, whether they, you're getting dented, if they get bumped around, you know, and then the repairs to that. Are much more expensive because it's stainless, because it's aluminum. And certainly more complicated, our guys don't even weld aluminum, so.
I, I, I understand that, that, that concept of Adrian, but, um. What, what do our, what do our dump trucks do right now besides carry salt in the winter for, for plowing and sanding? Or, no, plowing and salting, I should say. Um, they're, they're not, uh, yeah, they're construction vehicles, but they're not heavy construction vehicles.
No, but, but.
Hence, hence the reason for, um, I could almost guarantee you that the aluminum's gonna last a lot longer than the, than the, uh, than the steel. Uh, just, just look next door with, with a firehouse. We bought our very first aluminum-bodied fire truck in 1984.
Yeah, but Kurt, your, your apples and oranges, these.
Not, not really.
You guys are really nice to your equipment. You know, Public Works, the equipment takes a little bit more of a beating. You know, it's, it's out every single day. It's, it is getting stuff, you know, put in it.
Hence the, hence the truck part, Adrian.
Yeah, well, I mean.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna tell me that the steel body is better than aluminum or, or stainless steel body.
Well, there's a difference between what I, like, I have aluminum on mine, and I, I totally agree with you, I have aluminum on mine. But I am babying my truck. These guys are not, they're, they're, they're banging out their, you know, our shift, so if you go and look at the truck, you'll understand, it's not. You know.
I look at them all the time.
No, I meant our bodies, not, not, not like a regular, not, not a fire truck, so.
No, 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 I'm talking, I'm talking about our dump trucks.
Okay, so you know they're dented up?
Well, that's, uh, you know. If, I hope they're not getting, like, oh, never mind, I won't say what I was thinking. Um, just, 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 just thoughts that I have as far as, uh, um, putting a brand-new Everest body on a. On a truck that's 2005, that is an international, which do not last long.
Yeah, and we have gotten away from buying internationals, that's the only one we've bought, and that has been. Less reliable certainly than the Peterbouts, cheaper.
They usually are, correct.
Um.
That's all, just, uh, just, just a thought I had.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you in that I think if we can get it evaluated and, and we can get it welded. And we can keep it together structurally, I'm fine with pushing it, you know, I'm just concerned that, you know. We end up going a little too far and being a little too cheap. Since we do, we are gonna end up keeping the thing. Because the other one, our emergency spare, our fourth one, is, I think, already. Uh, yeah, our, our fourth truck is 23 years old now. And we're gonna be running that one as our emergency spare if it doesn't blow up for at least another three years. So.
You're talking, you're talking about the Sterling?
Uh, I don't think it's a Sterling, I think it's a Ford.
That's a Sterling, yeah.
Good. That's it for me, unless you got questions? More details to follow? Fred, you're muted.
Yeah, yeah, I just unmuted, um, so. That's it for that, then we have, uh, item E, uh, Kurt with something about Veterans Memorial Park.
Yeah, um, and I'll, I'll direct this question to Eric, um. Is that slated to get, uh, irrigation, uh, like, like the soccer fields?
Not at the moment.
No. I thought, I thought it was on the, on the radar to, uh, to put in some type of irrigation down there.
As, as part of our rework, a rework plan, yes.
Yes, that's, that's, that's my point, um, and I just, I'd like to read this, just make a recommendation that when you do. You either replace all of the. The grass or turf down there with, uh, either a whole new, whole new lawn like we did at the ball field. Or consider putting in some turf, uh, when they do the irrigation. Um, I was, I attended the Veterans, uh, um, uh. The, you know, with you, the Vet, the Veterans, uh, Remember State, uh, and, and that. I helped, I helped build that, uh, that area with Bruce Schoolway back in the, back in the day. When we, uh, put that all together originally, and I'll say that the, the grounds are terrible, absolutely terrible. Uh, doesn't look like there's been any, any fertilizer or, uh, extra grass growing or anything down there. Um, for, forever. So it's just a, it's a recommendation that when, when they do do the work down there, that you consider putting in some, some new, uh, some new, uh.
Yeah, Kurt, Kurt, that's why I got put on hold is because. There was talk about putting irrigation down there, and I pointed out that if you're gonna, if you're gonna end up reworking all the turf. And putting material down there and regrassing it, you'd want to do the irrigation as part of that, not.
Correct.
Not before and then ruin it all when you do the stuff, so.
Right, correct.
We put the irrigation on hold. But we're still trying to figure out to what extent. What it's actually gonna take to fix that whole project down there. And, um. You know, so we're, we're still trying to kind of sort that out as to whether it's better to. The idea was to bring in material initially, but. In order to do that, we've been told that we may actually have to take it down a couple of inches to have room to put material in, otherwise we're just gonna be too high.
Correct.
So there's, so there's some, some, a, a little bit of work to, to sort that out, so.
Right, I just, just wanted to, you know, get in on it before, uh, before it's done there.
You know, you, there will definitely be conversation publicly before anything's done down there, but because it's gonna be probably a bigger project rather than a smaller one.
Correct, okay.
Eric, Eric, could you take us off of, of screen share, my dear?
No.
Please?
Nope, get over it.
Okay, I'm over it, can you do it anyway? Thank you.
So, so is that all we had for that? Just bringing that up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. Um, so that takes us to our. Comment, do we have Pamela John, who, who are you? You've been. Is somebody there?
That's Pamela John.
Pamela John, yeah, I don't, I don't know who that is, who is that?
Nobody knows me.
Ah, the strange.
Hello, Pamela.
Hello, everyone. I am just working in my office, I, um, will probably drop in on many meetings. And just sit in, I'm loving hearing all of you and all of your input and all of the hard work that you do for our town. And just moving here, I give you guys so much credit. And that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, come to any of our meetings.
Yeah, thank you.
Join the ma, join the committee.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Yep.
Okay, um, so, well, thanks again for coming to, coming to our meeting, any, any public comment other than that?
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded. Hey, and Shannon, not for nothing, it's great to see you on point, it's, you're going at it. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, how, thank you.
You should have seen me last night, buddy, woo-hoo.
Who seconded that adjournment? I did. Adrian.
Adrian, because he wants to leave too.
I'm eating dinner, that's why the screen's off.
Well, we're going, we're going to the gym, so ha-ha.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody.
You shouldn't do that, it's bad for you.
Yeah, that's why we're doing it. Then we're gonna come to your house and spread the germs we get there.
Hey now.
Hey now, I know where he lives, ha-ha-ha.
All right, thanks to everybody for coming out.
Thanksgiving, everybody, don't spread any germs.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Thanksgiving.
Adios.
Bye.
Eric, answer my email.
Uh, you just emailed me?
No, um, P somebody did. From some committee, somebody I. I sought out and I picked on. It was about, it was about a project, you'll see the email, she, um, she just forwarded it to you.
Okay. I don't have it, she just, just forwarded it to me?
No, it was a while ago.
What's her last name?
I think it was P Lewis, Peggy Lewis, or something like that. Does that ring a bell?
No.
Okay, I'm going into my. Google emails.
But I have to say, on a bad day, I get 100 emails, so unfortunately I drop a lot more stuff than I wish I should.
Um, I, I am not judging you on that one. I'm in two open enrollment periods for Medicare and. Everybody else. That's why, that's why I didn't put myself up there tonight.
Sure, I don't see any, I just did a quick search on my email server for. A Peggy or a Lewis, and I don't see it, so unless, what's her, do you know what her email address is?
I just brought it up, it's P King, Paula King.
Oh, okay. Sure.
I just said, to save you time, I'm sorry to pick on you. But the, but you had the easiest name to ask my question.
Sure.
And there's rehab program with government funds to rehab, uh, historic residents.
Yeah, okay, now I know exactly what you're talking about, yeah, so.
I knew you would.
Sure, so, so Paula, uh, you know, emailed me regarding that. And what I said was, I need the information on the program because it's not really something I know anything about. So do you have links on, you know, what the program is, who it's funded through, that kind of stuff?
I actually do, I have, um. Well, I was talking back and forth by voicemail to Mansfield Town, and then. The Mans, Mansfield Town is, um, where it started, where I heard it from.
Sure.
And she's very well-versed in the whole program. But I think you had to attend meetings to get the money for your town. Is kind of the way I'm hearing it.
Yeah, very possibly, sure.
If they have anything left over, who's to say you can't maybe jump on board? Because I'm doing 25 and 27 Hebron Road. I would love to make them pristine, but they're costing me a, a big fortune here.
Yeah, historic structures are, are a labor of love, that's for sure.
It is, buckets and buckets of dirt out of the basement, that's where I started. Because I knew nobody would go down there and service anything if I didn't.
Sure, sure, so what, do you know what the name of the program is, or do you have a contact?
Oh.
Who do I talk to?
Let me see. It was a while ago, it was last week, I think. It is, I just had, I just saved it to Mansfield Town, it's 860-429-3341.
Hold on, 860-429, what was the last part?
3341.
And do you know, have the contact person's name?
I'm gonna listen to. I'm going to listen to the voicemail if I can find it.
Okay.
Because she gave, I think it was Mary something. But I get a hundred calls a day.
I know, I know.
Four hundred emails. It's not easy being us, is it?
No, I think most people these days are in that mode, you know?
I think a lot of people are. One day at a time.
Yep.
Pamela, it's Jaleen calling you back from the town of Mansfield on the housing rehab program. I am not aware if Andover has a program or not. I would suggest you give their town clerk a call and inquire. Um, I've never met anyone from Andover at any of the trainings or anything that we have to attend. But I do think it's, it's just worth a phone call to see if they have this program. If you have any other questions, eight six zero four two nine three three four one is my direct line. Thank you.
Well, that is a blast from the past. Jaleen was, when I was first uh, chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission in town many years ago, Jaleen was the, uh, she was the recording secretary for the meetings and she was fantastic. Um, and then Mansfield hired her away from us by paying her, oh, about five times what we're, we had in the budget. And, uh, she went to work for Mansfield. Great woman. Really a class act. Okay. I know who to talk to.
It was really nice of her to get back to me with just, just what she had.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'll, I'll reach out to her and see whether I can get details on the program. Because honestly, it's, you know, it's like, it's kind of crazy, but, you know, if you know about something, you can also often like, like, get in on the deal and, you know, we've gotten money from a bot, batch of different sources just because somebody said, hey, you should apply for this. I'm like, what are you talking about? And they're like, here it is, and, uh,
Knowledge is power.
Yep, exactly.
The more feelers you got out there, the more money's coming in, and then you can get your street sweeper.
Yeah, that's going to be inexpensive, but necessary.
Yeah.
Um, okay, um, I will
Can you sell the steel from the old one?
Yeah, actually.
Kind of offer the cost?
Yeah, except you don't, I mean, the wholesale price of steel isn't that high. Um, we do take all our scrap steel down to John's Steel Yard. And usually what we do is we run a credit there because we, you know, we buy steel for repairing stuff there also. So, you know, we keep a certain credit, and then when we have excess material, we plow that back into the town general fund.
I like that.
But it's, it's never a, you know, it's
It's not what you think it is.
No, I mean, you know, we've bought, brought trailer loads of steel down there and, you know, I think the last check they gave us was for like five hundred bucks. It's almost not worth the hauling, but,
Aye.
Um, but on the other hand, um, you know, they, they'll do like a one for one poundage swap with you. So if you find stuff down there that you need, like a couple of years ago, we got a whole bunch of, uh, storm grain steel covers that somebody had ordered the wrong size, and they had like twelve brand new ones sitting there. And we got them for the bulk price of steel, which was, you know, way cheaper because they're normally like a hundred and eighty bucks a pop, so, you know, every once in a while it can work out for you, but, but the cost of steel is, you know, is not that high, but still worth getting what you can, you know?
Right, well, the, these guys, um, I have a client in Mansfield Center on Center Street. And he had, he told me about it, and he said, they come and if you have lead paint, they scrape it all the way down. They vacuum up any remnants, so you don't have that, you know, in old historic homes or historic buildings, you have that white peeling paint that's laying on the ground all the time.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's hideous. You keep covering it with mulch or you pick it out of the mulch when it rises to the top after a rain. You know, it's just, so they take care of all that, and this, they hire certain companies that have gone through all the regs, I guess.
Sure, yeah.
Right, and it's free.
Yeah.
They own the money to do it. They hire the people to do it. They log it with the historic registry or whatever. And, um, you pay them back at zero interest when you sell the property, or if you die.
Sure, okay.
It's a beautiful program.
Yeah, that sounds like a great deal.
And his, and his house looks pristine. That does, his, his house is white and pristine. It's, uh, probably